I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Ms. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next recommended action is that the Board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meeting Act, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
The recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Our next item on the agenda is the recognition and we have our state award winners. Dr. Small.
Eric Winkowski, Director of Athletics and Activities. Will you please begin our recognitions tonight and introduce us to some talented and successful students?
Yes. Board of Education, Dr. Small, thank you for taking some time tonight to honor some of District 211's top debaters and a truly exceptional basketball team. Also here tonight to support and honor their students are Palatine Principal Tony Medina and Assistant Principal Kim Glazer, Frem Principal Mark Langer and Assistant Principal Mandy Hughes, Schaumburg Principal Brian Harland and Assistant Principal Rusty Cummings, and Hoffman Estates Principal Mike Arthur and Assistant Principal Tom Mokon. Students, after I introduce your sponsors, they will come up here. As they introduce you, please walk forward and I'll ask that any family members that are here tonight, when your student is introduced, to please stand and be recognized with them. Okay, so we'll start with Palatine High School debate. We're gonna hear a little bit more about, come on, come forward Brenda. We're gonna hear a little bit more about Brenda later on tonight, so I'm gonna give you a quick intro that Brenda is an English teacher and has been the head debate coach at Palatine High School for the last eight years. Brenda.
Okay, thank you Board members for recognizing our program, which not only fosters educational skills that transfer across the high school curriculum, but also teaches students how to embrace and bounce back from failure. We have had our share of challenges this year in the debate community. We started out in a virtual format and then transitioned to in-person competitions, moved back to a digital format, and then back to in-person. Throughout the year, we were able to witness our students' resiliency and their commitment to debate. I'm especially proud of our upperclassmen's leadership. They guided and mentored their underclassmen peers as well as helped them ease into competitions and feel comfortable shifting through formats. Truly, our kids are amazing leaders and we should all be so proud of them. I encourage you to come to any of our competitions throughout the year. I'd also like to thank our principal, Mr. Tony Medina, and our activities director, Ms. Kim Glazer, for their continued support. I'm incredibly grateful for our assistant coaches, Ms. Leslie Shawk, who's not here today because she's at a lacrosse game, but Dr. Sam Dolan is here, whose continued support and hard work and dedication to our team motivates our kids. And I endlessly and deeply cherish their support as well as their mentorship and their friendship. I'd like to thank my fellow debate coaches, Ms. Tiffany Regan and Mr. Carl Schwartz, for their love of this program and for their continuous efforts to ensure that the debate community continues to grow. Palatine High School would like to recognize two teams today for their outstanding work and leadership. Junior C. Sean Yudin, who is not here today. C. Sean competes in Lincoln Douglas Debate and is a member of the All-State Team. Junior Ishika Mishra, who is also not here today. Ishika competes in Lincoln Douglas Debate and is a quarterfinalist at IHSA as well as a member of the All-State Team. Here today, we have Junior Ravi Shah, who is here today with his dad, Vipul Shah. Mr. Shahvi, this is him. Ravi competes in Lincoln Douglas Debate and is the IHSA state runner-up in Lincoln Douglas Debate as well as a member of the All-State Team. Junior Ria Ayer, who is here with her parents, Mr. Ramesh Ayer and Vishwini Ayer. Ria is the IHSA state runner-up in public forum. And lastly, Ria's partner and the captain of our team, Senior Prana Pele, is here with his parents, Vinod Pele and Joltsna Pele. Prana is our state runner-up at the IHSA Debate Championship, also in public forum. I'm so proud of our kids and our entire team. Thank you so much for your support.
All right, and now we'll move on to Fremd. Ms. Tiffany Regan, Fremd's debate coach, her head coach was not able to be here tonight, but her assistant, Rachel Krulwich, is here. Rachel started as the Fremd Student Congress Coach in 2015 as a volunteer and ascended to becoming the head coach of Student Congress. Rachel is not in education, however, she's the Giving Manager for the Center for Enriched Living, which is a local community that provides social enrichment, day programming, and employment services to people with intellectual and development disabilities. So Rachel, why don't you come on up?
Hi. On behalf of LD head coach Tiffany Regan and myself, we'd like to thank the Board, Dr. Small and Dr. Small for supporting debate education for the students of 211 and for this opportunity here tonight. We'd also like to thank all of the parents who have gotten up so early on so many weekends and helped their students prepare for so many tournaments, and the assistant coaches for LD and PF, Dorothy Robach, Anna Ignatovich, and Sunny Patel. We'd also like to thank the assistant coaches for Congress, Emmett Phillips and Nabilah Sayed. I'd also like to personally thank Tiffany Regan for all of her support this year. I truly could not have done it without her. We are both so very proud of our entire debate team comprised of Student Congress, Lincoln Douglas, and public forum debaters. These students have competed electronically and in person this year. They have adapted to numerous changes and then adapted again to numerous more changes in order to compete safely throughout the season. These students have truly risen to the challenge and turned this season into a positive opportunity for incredible success. We could not be more proud of this intelligent, resilient, caring, and bright group. They make coaching a joy and a privilege. Please hold all your applause until the end and we will clap for them all together. So first, your state champions in public forum, Gabe Seidman and Aditya Vidyanathan. Gabe could not be here tonight, but in addition to state champion, he was second-place speaker on the All-State Team. Joining us here tonight is Aditya Vidyanathan, along with his parents, Molly and Ranjani Vidyanathan. Aditya was first place in public forum and first-place speaker and captain of the All-State Team. Next, we have Sophia Zhao, who is joined by her mother, Bo Shen, tonight. She is a PF semifinalist and she was the sixth-place PF speaker on the All-State Team. Next, we have Selena Zheng. She is joined by her dad, Lan Zheng. She is a PF semifinalist. Next, we have Sunjana Kashyap. Sunjana is joined tonight by her parents, Sutappa and Partha Kashyap. Sunjana was the semifinalist and the third place in the state of Illinois in Lincoln Douglas. Next up, we have Eric Fay from the Congress Team. Eric was fourth place overall in Congress and was the first-place Congress Speaker and captain of the All-State Team. He is joined tonight by his dad, Yiming Fay. Next, we have Adesh Perthap. He is joined by his parents tonight, Sunganya and Perthap. He was a finalist in Congress and the third-place Congress Speaker on the All-State Team. Next, we have Calvin Frank. Calvin is joined tonight by his parents, Mary Ann and Don Frank. Calvin is a finalist and was the fourth-place Congress Speaker on the All-State Team. Next, we have Prashanth Ramachandra. Prashanth is joined tonight by his mom, Vidya Ramin. Prashanth was a finalist in congressional debate. Finally tonight, I want to recognize finalist, Ria Mukherjee, who could not be here tonight. Thank you so much for your support.
All right, next I'll introduce the veteran of our debate community. Carl Schwartz is in his 16th year of teaching as a special education teacher assistant and debate coach at Schaumburg High School. He's been involved with the debate program since 2007 and this is his sixth year as a head coach. Carl, come on forward.
Thank you to Dr. Small and the Board of Education for recognizing our district's debate accomplishments tonight. I also appreciate all the support my activity director, Mr. Cummings, and principal, Mr. Harland, give to our program. And thank you to my assistant coach, Caitlin Clark Johnson, Spanish teacher at Schaumburg, whose expertise and dedication is vital to the success of our program. Congratulations to the Fremd and Palatine debate teams for their many accomplishments this season. Coach Moreno from Palatine certainly earned my vote for the Illinois Debate Community Coach of the Year for her team's excellence in two forms of debate and for the time and effort she spends helping coaches from other schools in the community run safe and fair tournaments. So congratulations and thank you for everything, Brenda. I'm here to honor Clark Eastley, joined tonight by his father Gregory. Clark led Schaumburg's Lincoln Douglas Debate Team to the IHSA State Championship, the first time this was ever accomplished by a sophomore. I have coached hundreds of debaters over almost two decades and Clark is the quickest in terms of understanding new information, putting it into his own words, and using it for strategic argumentative purposes. Clark is also a strong leader and captain of our team. He's very generous with his time and energy, helping less experienced debaters brainstorm, research, and deliver speeches by giving them positive and constructive feedback. He leads by example through consistent, purposeful practice over time toward his goals. In the debate community, Clark participates in ICDA captains meetings, which develop recommendations from a student perspective for rule and procedure changes at league tournaments. Beyond debate, Clark uses his voice in student leadership organizations to influence positive change through his involvement in Saxons Lead, the Principal Advisory Board, and Black Leader Achievers. I'm so proud of Clark and I'm grateful that our district supports debate so that students like him and the others we've recognized tonight can participate in a rigorous academic sport that helps them build the skills they need for success in college and in the complex, dynamic professions that tend to attract them. So thank you all for your time and attention tonight.
Okay, next we're gonna talk about a great basketball team. Mr. Gadowski, who is the head coach of the basketball team, is not here because, like Ms. Shawk, he is also coaching lacrosse tonight, so he was not here, but he put us in the capable hands of his assistants. So I'm gonna introduce ATP Teacher Assistant Nicole Stacy and Hoffman Estates Teacher Katie McGarvey to talk about these students.
Thank you so much for having us, everybody. Also, thank you to Mike and Tom, the principal and assistant principal of Hoffman Estates. We appreciate your support. This year, our Unified Special Olympics Basketball Team won our first-ever state championship. Being a unified team means that we're made up of both athletes with and without disabilities. We strive to make inclusion of people with all abilities a reality, as is the Special Olympics mission. Athletes from Hoffman Estates and Higgins Education Center came together to form this awesome team and we could not be more proud of them. While winning the championship is a great memory to look back upon, Coach Gadowski, pardon me, yikes, Coach Gadowski, Stacy and I are most proud of their teamwork, sportsmanship, and commitment to inclusion. We are so proud of you guys, congrats. And now Coach Stacy will introduce our athletes.
First, we have Zach Pierce, here with his brother. Jessica Summerer, with her mother. Udel Hidalgo Gato, with his parents. Diego Barrera, with his mother. Jack Hostin is here with his dad tonight. Tyler Greenbaum, with his parents. Jalen Johnson, with his mom. And Marcus Menosa, with his friends, too, tonight.
Well, Palatine High School debate coach Brenda Moreno, please come back up to the podium. I'd like to congratulate Palatine High School debate sponsor Brenda Moreno on her selection to the Illinois Debate Community Coach of the Year. She's active in the Illinois Debate Community and this award recognizes her contributions and successes. Brenda had four students earn IHSA recognition at the state level for both public forum and Lincoln Douglas Debate this year, and that level of accomplishment is common within her team. Students say she is committed to continually elevating debate at Palatine and they have also reported that her intense dedication inspires the debaters themselves. She makes a point to get to know each member of the team and is always available to help them. Brenda is a dean, English teacher, a new educator coordinator at Palatine High School, and also co-sponsors the school's organization of Latinx American students. As a first-generation college graduate, she is passionate about supporting all students and ensuring they reach their full potential through education and involvement in activities. Brenda is a veteran of the Illinois Army National Guard and was deployed twice in support of Operation Iraq Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom. Brenda, congratulations on this award and thank you for all that you do to inspire our students. It is my honor tonight to also honor one of our two finalists as the Golden Apple Excellence in Teaching Award. The other finalists will be honored at a future meeting. This award is given by the Golden Apple Foundation, an Illinois nonprofit committed to preparing, honoring, and supporting educators. It is a highly competitive award process with only 30 high school teachers being named as finalists in the entire state. To have two of them in District 211 is incredible. Specifically, this honors teachers who have lasting, positive effects on our students' lives and within our school communities. Each finalist demonstrates a significant impact on student growth. I'd like to introduce Principal Brian Harland and Schaumburg High School's Golden Apple finalist, Mary Lopez.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking the members of the Board of Education and Dr. Small for the opportunity to recognize an amazing educator and 2022 Golden Apple Award finalist for Excellence in Teaching, Mrs. Mary Lopez. Mrs. Lopez started her time in District 211 in 1995 when she became a member of the Social Studies Department at Schaumburg High School. To say that she was an excellent hire would be an immense understatement, given the impact that she's had on both students and staff members at SHS over the last 27 years. She has taught all levels of US history, developed the American Studies Program at Schaumburg High School, and has spent time teaching students through the night school program in District 211. While preparing for tonight, I took some time to speak with Mrs. Lopez's students and her counterparts. One of her students shared the following about Mrs. Lopez and what she means to her. "Her infectious love of history was evident, and each day I felt honored to pull a little more from what truly is a well of knowledge. Mrs. Lopez is able to take what is one of the most challenging classes for many students and transform it into a positive experience, shaping the way students attack challenges in the future. While maintaining the rigorous schedule needed to complete the content for our US History course, she encouraged students to look at history through multiple perspectives and develop a critical view of history. Mrs. Lopez has inspired me to expand my knowledge and approach all I do with consideration and attentiveness." The sentiment about Mrs. Lopez also extends to her coworkers. A coworker and friend in her department shared that what distinguishes Mary Lopez within our district and of the Golden Apple Committee is her connection with her students. She is often a trusted adult that students come to with academic and personal concerns. Who the kids are as individuals is just as important to her as who they are as students. And during the last two years, that trait has been just as imperative as her content knowledge. Mr. Aaron Phillips also had wonderful things to say, stating that Mary's energy and commitment to teaching and learning is infectious and anyone that works with her can see the influence she has on students at Schaumburg High School. Mary's classroom is a revolving door of current, past, and future students that seek her out for guidance, opportunity, and conversation. Students know that Mary's door is always open and it is this trait that endears her to so many. An educator that influences students and colleagues through example and a commitment to excellence, Mary's value to the Social Studies Department and Schaumburg High School is unquestioned. Over the years, her impact at Schaumburg High School has extended beyond the school day and her roles as a basketball coach, girls' basketball coach, the sponsor of National Honor Society, and she's had a major role as a core member of the Schaumburg High School St. Baldur's fundraising team. Mrs. Lopez is also a leader in the AP community, serving as an AP reader for College Board since 2003, eventually taking on a leadership position as an exam and question leader. She also spent four years as a member of the AP Development Team for College Board, and this summer she'll be leading five different AP summer institutes across the country. Mary, I'm honored to work beside you at Schaumburg High School and congratulate you on a well-deserved recognition as a Golden Apple Award finalist for Excellence in Teaching. Board of Education, Dr. Small, it's my pleasure to present to you, Mrs. Mary Lopez.
All right. Thank you very much to all of our students. Congratulations for our debaters, for your wonderful accomplishments, and a special congratulations to our Special Olympics United Unified Basketball Team. That was a tremendous accomplishment. You put so much effort into it. Congratulations. And thank you to the parents for getting your children where they needed to be, supporting them, being there for them. That means the world. And thank you to our staff for all that you do for our students, for supporting them. To Ms. Moreno and Ms. Lopez, congratulations on your accomplishments. It's wonderful and you should be recognized for everything that you do and we are grateful and proud to have you as part of our staff, with both you ladies. At this time, we're going to take a break for a few minutes. We're gonna take some pictures, so family members can take pictures also here, and then we'll reconvene probably within about five minutes. Okay? Please. Going to continue on with our meeting. The next item on the agenda is public comments and hearing. The Board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the Board members will not be responding to your comments or answering your questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Your limit for your comments is five minutes. You'll be notified, you'll receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individuals unused time or place an order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper. At this time, we've got six people who are going to speak to us. The first speaker would be Melissa O., the next speaker after her would be Aiden Brannas.
Good evening, everyone. It's hard to come up here after we just had such an amazing night with all those awards. I love seeing all the kids take pictures and get recognized. Just one thing, I'll keep it short, just wanted to bring it up. I've had a lot of parents contact me, a lot of students, my own student. I'm a parent of a Palatine High School student and the issue is about the bathrooms. So every day my son comes home from school, he has to run to the bathroom and I asked him what was going on. I think this started like two weeks ago and he told me, he's like, they closed down a lot of the bathrooms at the school and I don't want to be late for my class, so it's like, you can't go in between, so I have to rush and we can't go during the day. Started talking to other parents and they're like, you know, my daughter had her period, I had to keep her home. It's like impossible to get into a bathroom. They go in between classes. There's like a 20-minute wait and then they have to get a pass to get in the class late and it's just, it's a lot on the students. They're really stressed out, you know, and just, we all have basic needs, right? We have to drink water, we have to stay hydrated, and I've heard they're limiting their water intake because they can't get into a bathroom. You know, I've heard from substitute teachers, they say, you know what, I'm not like the other staff, I don't have a key. I'm in the same situation. I can't even use a bathroom. And from what I heard, staff was emailed, sent an email today saying they're not allowed to discuss the bathroom issue. I don't know why it's being kept such a secret, but this is something we need to talk about because it's affecting our child and their class time and it's affecting their mental health, too, because they're so stressed out as it is and now they're worried about, oh, I'm gonna miss this part of class and I'm not gonna know what's going on and we don't need to put anything extra on our students. I heard it was because of vaping and there has to be a better way, you know, to control the vaping issue with, you know, without letting, you know, other students need to use the bathroom. I did start a petition on this. I wanted to get some students' feedback and if I have time, I'd just like to read a few comments so the students' voices can be heard. One person said, "I'm signing this because we should be able to pee when we want." Another person said, "Three bathrooms for 3,000 kids is just not enough, and especially special needs kids. Otherwise, they have to wait in long lines to use the accessible bathroom stalls." Another student said, "Not only does it force students to consume less water, knowing they'll have to pee but can't, but only limiting bathrooms one per floor makes gender-neutral bathrooms not available for non-binary people. It's unfair, and this is the only thing, this is not fair that the school is doing this." And I did hear that for students who don't identify as male or female, they have to use the bathroom at the nurse's station. So what if they have like a class on the second floor at the opposite end? You know, I'm not sure what the layout is. I just know like, how many times do you, you know, how much time do you have between classes? It's just not enough time for them to be running to the bathroom. So, you know, we just need to do better for our students. It's really all about them and we just need to meet our basic needs. I'll leave this petition for the Board to review and that's all I have. I hope you really consider changing the policy at Palatine High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Aiden Brannas and followed by Maria Gallo.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Aiden Brannas.
My name is Aiden Brands. I'm a senior at Palatine High School, and in a few short weeks, I'm going to be graduating. Over the past four years I've spent at Palatine High School, I have seen and experienced for myself harassment, threats, lies, and deception from the Palatine High School administration on a daily basis for years. Students are called down to the office and are harassed by the administration over something petty, such as a late library book, and are belittled by staff. They make the students feel as if they are in trouble and that they are not to be trusted. The faculty likes to abuse their power and bully kids. The assistant principals like to interrogate students and try to break them down, and if that fails, they have a tendency to bring in the school resource officer to further escalate the situation and blow something way out of proportion. School is a place for education and learning, but the way the PHS, I'm sorry, the PHS staff runs its school, it almost feels like a prison. For example, they watch our every move, they control our bathroom use, which it's a human right to go to the bathroom. You can't say to someone, you can't go to the bathroom. It's disgusting, to be honest with you. And the hall monitors, they just watch over us, and they act like they're off-duty cops. It's an embarrassment going to the worst school in District 211, and it's a shame how poorly Principal Medina, who is just in the audience, has ran the school. For the rest of my life, I will always be disgusted when I tell people I graduated from Palatine High School. My school has been in so many controversies over the years, such as the former principal being a weirdo, discrimination against a transgender student, and a teacher who was exposed for being a really, really big racist. I have a lot more to say and expose, but for now, I just wanted to focus on this. So in the next meeting, two weeks from now, I will be back and talk about how my school has personally discriminated against me and how they have tried to silence my voice many times. And I would just like to shout out Tim, Anna, and Curtis. You're the only ones I like on this board, so keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Gallo, followed by Kathy Rizberg.
Hello. Hi, my name is Maria Gallo, and I've been paying property taxes to District 211 for 26 years. Thank you to the school board for providing the opportunity to speak. I was glad to see that the school district and the teachers' union have come to an agreement on a new contract, and I urge the school board to approve it. I'm also very glad to see that yesterday Governor Pritzker signed new laws that will make it easier for schools like District 211 to find new teachers to fill recent vacancies. I'm very impressed with the faculty of District 211. It is easy to see from the meetings here and the appreciation that's gone on here, recognition, is that our teachers are dedicated to helping young people make their way to adulthood. I homeschooled my own three kids all the way through high school, and it was very tough. I am in awe of our teachers who have chosen to teach other people's teenagers year after year. Clearly, our teachers are people who take seriously the task of teaching our young people. Our society should rightly honor and reward those who choose to educate future generations. These teachers have chosen as their career to show their, share their love of learning with young people. They are preparing our young people to use reason and facts in their thinking. They are teaching our teens to respect others. They are preparing our teens for a future that will be diverse, challenging, and exciting. Our teachers should be well compensated for taking on this task. So I'm concerned about a group of extremists called Awake Illinois that are circulating a so-called Bill of Parental Rights. These extremists are demanding things that are already available to parents. Do you want your kid to opt out of a sex ed class? You can already do that. Do you want to see the curriculum? You can already do that. What is most troubling about Awake Illinois is what they don't want taught in schools. They don't want the schools to offer an honest education about history, literature, and science, or math. They don't want schools to help minority students reach for a better future, and they don't want students to learn from the mistakes of the past. Even more troubling is they don't want schools to teach students about consent, as in, you have to give your consent to being touched. No means no. Awake Illinois doesn't want girls or boys to know that they can say no to being grabbed. They don't want LGBTQ kids to learn to say no to bullying. They don't want schoolchildren to know that they can say no if an adult tries to touch them in a bad way. Basically, Awake Illinois doesn't want our children to be able to think for themselves or to protect themselves. They want students to be ignorant in terms of academics, diversity, and personal safety. The teachers of District 211 are devoted to educating all students in this district, and they are committed to helping all of them aspire to excellence. The parents who make up Awake Illinois, however, have no interest in improving public education or actually helping students achieve. Fortunately, we have excellent teachers, administrators, board members, and community members who are standing up to these bullies, and we will always stand up to hatred.
Thank you. Kathy Rizberg, followed by Joyce Slavik.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Rizberg, and as a District 211 taxpayer, I want to thank you once again for giving me and all my fellow community members a chance to speak at these monthly school board meetings. And I want to thank you and our District 211 staff for all that you do for students and their families. The past two times that I've spoken, I've stood before you as a parent of three Fram graduates, as an educator and supporter of honesty in education, and as a woman of faith who believes in peacemaking and bridge building. And tonight, I stand here as a grateful District 211 community member with a singular purpose to heed Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s words, "To build bridges, not walls." It's a call to action I have found impossible to ignore, especially in times like these when public educators and school boards have been under relentless attack across the country. And yet, as I think about the different perspectives shared in the various District 211 public comment spaces, I am encouraged by the fact that, no matter our individual age, skin color, or zip code, we can all agree that all students deserve a great education. But there are some politically funded national groups working to divide us as parents and to divide us as a community and as a nation. Members of these groups often show up to spread disinformation about our local school curriculum, call for books to be banned, and even resort to threats and abusive language in a space designed for all civil public comments. Nevertheless, together, we can move forward with a sense of hope and faith in our fellow community members and unite over a shared vision to build bridges, not walls, to ensure that all of our students have the freedom to learn, grow, and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce Slavik, followed by Karen Powers.
Hi, my name is Joyce Slavik. I'm a parent in the district. I just want to say I'm thankful. I'm thankful for our teachers. They have had to deal with so much in these last two years, personally and professionally, yet they continue to dedicate their lives to teaching our children and lifting them up. I'm thankful for our school board and our superintendent. These are tireless and often thankless jobs. I appreciate what you do. I'm thankful for our students. As we see by all the activities they're involved in, all the accolades they get, they are the reason we need to support our public schools and listen to them when they have concerns. We also know that mental health issues for adolescents is a major public health concern, so we need to continue to find ways to help protect them, and especially those underserved or marginalized students. We see you and we want you to succeed. We need to preserve and enhance our public schools, not tear them down, and we must provide honest, accurate education. I want every child in our schools to be seen, heard, and supported, not marginalized and targeted because they are not straight, white, or Christian. And I know that hate will only win if people like me stand by and let it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Powers. I have a daughter in District 211. I'm here to address district benchmark assessments, also known as DBAs. They are currently being administered. The only reason I know this is because my daughter told me last night. She is a junior, and this is the first time we have heard of them, and the first time she has taken them since starting high school. I received no communication from the district administration, the school administration, or her teachers regarding them or the fact that they will impact her grade. If you are a junior in District 211, you took the SAT on April 13th. This is the first standardized test they have taken since October 2018, when they were in eighth grade. If you are like my daughter, the remaining weeks will include three AP exams, four final exams, and five district benchmark assessments. If you are keeping track, that is 13 exams and assessments for a student whose freshman year ended in March of 2020. Her sophomore year academics were subpar and only entailed about 60% of the full curriculum, and now she is thrust into the most important year of high school, her junior year. I read the little blurb on the district website regarding DBAs. In short, it is a teacher-created assessment to guide instructional decisions to improve student learning. I don't have a problem with its purpose, but I do have a problem with when it's administered. The description on the website fails to mention the weight of the assessment and that it will impact their grade. I imagine the levels of stress and anxiety among juniors across the district is high. I can only attest to my daughters. What is there to gain from bombarding the students with DBAs at the same time as finals and AP exams? Taking AP classes is encouraged by this district, and the AP exams cost $98 per exam to take. The DBAs take away the focus needed to do well on these exams as well as their finals. I often feel like you have forgotten what they have been through emotionally and academically in the last two years. It feels as if no consideration has been given before implementing the DBAs again. I'm asking the district to revisit the timing of administering them. They should not be administered at the same time as AP exams and finals. I'm also asking the district to communicate to the parents when they are going to be administered, just as you do for finals, SAT, PSAT, and other district-wide assessments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our speakers this evening. Our next item on the agenda, there are no presentations this evening, so the next item on the agenda is our Consent Agenda items. Is there anyone that needs to have an item pulled?
For protocol purposes, I'd like to remove Items A and B from the Consent Agenda.
There's... Item A would be a separate motion to begin with, and Item B is a separate one also. I've got three motions.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we do have three motions. All right, is there anything else that... All right, then the recommended action is that the Consent Agenda with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting from April 7, 2022, and the special meeting from April 14, 2022 be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz. Aye. All right, the next action is that the minutes of the regular meeting of April 7, 2022 be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Mcgowan.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. All right, the next action is that the minutes of the special meeting of April 14, 2022 be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Mcgowan.
Abstain.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Okay, then that takes us to Special Reports and Communication. There's some FOIA's for information. Any questions there? All right, then that brings us to Unfinished Business, and that would be our discussion about our strategic plan, our mission, and our vision, excuse me, our mission and our values. All right. So you should have the information in front of you, and I think one of the things that we need to do is come up with consensus on what our mission statement would be. We've got three currently right now. We have our current policy AD district mission statement, which, would you like me to read it?
Sure.
Okay, it's Township High School District 211 serves the educational needs of the community, inspiring all students to successfully contribute to the world. We have two other options that we may be able to use for our mission statement if you wish. Option A is Township High School District 211 serves the community by providing all students the necessary learning experiences and support to successfully contribute to the world. Option B reads Township High School District 211 serves the needs of our diverse community by providing relevant and rigorous learning experiences, opportunities for involvement, and strong support systems that empower all students to reach their full potential. So I'd like to get some feedback as to which option you would support, excuse me, which mission statement you would support, so we can...
Before we hear those comments, if I could just make a request. I wasn't able to attend this meeting. I had COVID, unfortunately, and so for those members who were able to attend this meeting, when I was reading the debriefing following that meeting, some of the feedback that I saw consistently was that mission and values, some of it just seemed a bit verbose. You know, some people were saying that it's a little bit too much, we could say things simpler, and I was wondering for those who were able to attend and participate in the discussion, was that, was that feedback targeted at our values, or was that targeted to the mission too?
I think it was more towards the values because some of them could be combined together.
Okay.
So... Some of the feedback was to enhance the mission statement that we currently have. So I'd like to open it up for discussion. What does, what do the board members feel? Do you want to keep our current mission statement? Would you like Option A or Option B?
Well, I'll talk a little bit about the meeting, and then I'll give you my option. I thought we had a great meeting. I had the opportunity to sit with Mr. Kramer at a table, and we had a lot of positive conversation around some of our new values and trying to really break them down, and I believe, what was it, like 15 points on one, 11? And we were able to bring it down really quick and fast, where we were able to agree.
Seven or eight or whatever.
Yeah, and so with that, I will, I really love Option B because it really incumbents our entire district, in my opinion.
All right.
Agree.
Mark, Mr. Kramer?
I agree. B.
So I concur. I thought B was a little bit more inclusive of the various components of what we do as a school district in regards to our mission, and so I think that B, you know, we talked about rigorous learning quite a bit during the breakout sessions and involvement, and we talked about whether we were preparing our students for the world, or how can we differently phrase that in a way that still talks about preparing them to what I think here says their full potential, whatever that may be, right? And there's different full potentials for different people, and I think this reflects the diversity of our community, the diversity of our students, and the diversity of what we do. So I think B is the way to go.
Okay.
I personally liked B too. My only hesitation was about whether or not the feedback from our community members
So even if they reach their full potential, they've got to get out in the world and contribute.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGowan?
I like B. I think it's just a little bit more needed detail there to accurately represent the district as a whole and what the direction is. So Mission Statement B.
Okay, and my recommendation is also with letter Option B. I like the wording "a diverse community," so I think that that's important. So I thank you, so it looks like it would be for the mission statement, it would be Option B.
And then this will... Because this is a board policy, it will come back again at the next meeting in May in policy format for review, and then the second meeting in May for voting as policy.
And I'd like to add, for those who are here, and for those who may be watching, and for those who aren't, but either watch it later or hear from others, I strongly encourage anyone who would like to provide feedback, because this is on the website, so public knowledge as to what we're discussing here. So please, if you have feedback that you would like to provide, I welcome it. I think every board member here would welcome it, as well as the superintendent and the administration. So please, if you have comments that you would like to share with us to help us at our next meeting with consideration, please provide that.
I think that the gentleman, Jason, from Inside Education, did a really good job of keeping the group on focus, on task, and providing information that came from the focus groups. It came from the steering committee, it came from the focus groups. They were able to take the information we provided and the discussions, as Mr. Bradley had just kind of alluded to a few minutes ago. We were able to work in groups. Administration was able to take a look at this and take that information that we had. They did say, the steering committee and the focus groups, that our value statements were maybe a little bit too wordy, and there were probably some that can be condensed together. So you have that before you, the proposed value statements. Is there any comments or discussions on the proposed values?
In general, I... You know, we left... We left the meeting with this an open issue. I'm wondering what happened after the meeting. Did the consultant put it together and write these, or did the consultant work with the administration to write these new proposed value statements?
So we have standing weekly meetings with a consultant, and he puts together a draft from what he heard from the board discussion on April 14. Mr. Teniper, Ms. Holmes, and myself meet with him. We saw those, and that's what came of that discussion. And that's what's before the board in terms of any suggestions for change at this time can come forward in May.
Well, I like what I see, but how much of a change? Was there any changes to what the consultant proposed, or is this...
This seems like what we had talked about. I did take some notes, and it seems pretty accurate to what we had talked about in the groups, and that was presented, and they did some wordsmithing here to capture the essence of what we tried to get across.
Okay.
It was a combined effort.
Okay. My concern there is that the next step in this is to put some action steps behind each one of these, and...
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And so this kind of sets the framework for that.
And yes, and you also saw the chart that's also progressing, that the board will continue to see at board meetings.
Okay.
There's one item that I would like to add that we talked about, and that was the word "respect." I still feel that that's important. I was wondering how the board would feel if we were to add the word "respect" to the heading of "Safety and Wellness," so it might read "Respect, Safety, and Wellness," because I think that's really important, and respect implies, you know, recognizing and properly honoring the worth of someone or something. And our kids want to be respected for who they are. We need to respect our staff for who they are. We need to respect the authority. We need to respect the rules. So I would like to see the word "respect" added maybe to that heading of "Safety and Wellness."
I have no... I have no issue with saying "safety, wellness, and respect," although respectful is within the description of that section specifically, but I have no issue with adding it as part of the header.
Same.
I agree.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. I think that that's really important.
For the writers in the room, can we move the word "respect" up to the heading of "Safety and Wellness" and still use it in the body? Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have consensus to go with the proposed value statements, then? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Yes? Okay.
I just wanted to add one more thing to the discussion. We've completely eliminated the value of innovation.
Do you want to add some more verbiage there? We've got "innovation and learning," and I know that was a discussion at the meeting.
I have no intention of beating a dead horse if there isn't a consensus to value innovation in the district.
Value... Innovation is one of the proposed values. Do you want to add more verbiage?
No, that's already existing. We're removing it. If you scroll down, right?
Right, and I see "innovation and learning."
Innovation and learning?
Yeah, we have it.
Okay, I take that back. I'm sorry. I thought it was removed.
Yeah, no, no, it's in there. It's in there, because that was one of the things that was discussed and the importance of that.
Okay.
Mr. Dombrowski, if you would like maybe suggesting to add the word "and innovation" after the word "development," if that would work?
I think it's fine there. I think it's clear what the definition is.
Okay, thank you. So Dr. Small, what's our next step, then? Please tell us once again.
So it will come back at the May 12 meeting, but it will look in a different format, because it will be in the format of what you see for policies. So it'll be review May 12 for policies, voting at the end of May if the board is ready to vote on them, and then it becomes... That verbiage goes into the strategic plan, but it will have obviously a different look. You saw one of our drafts of the look of how it will be presented graphically, but the verbiage and the words will be the same as the board decides by the end of May.
Does it have to go to the policy committee?
No, because of the discussion that's happening here.
Okay.
And at the April 14 meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the graphs are an important part of this, because it really helps focus from left to right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. The next item is new business request for proposal athletic training services. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the three-year contract agreement with Athletico Physical Therapy to provide assistant athletic training services at a cost of $26.38 per hour for the school year athletic trainers, and $30 per hour for summer camps substitute athletic trainers for the year ending June 30, 2023, with an annual increase equal to the rate of a Consumer Price Index for urban consumers, CPI hyphen U, with a minimum increase of 1% and a maximum increase of 5% for the 2023, 2024, and '24, 2025 school years, and approve the option to renew the contract for two additional years for the period July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2027, under the same terms and conditions. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
They're the current vendor right now, correct? The... A couple of questions. How does this new proposed contract compare to the last one? Is it comparable, the same, identical? What are the significant changes?
The changes in certainly the cost. The services is same.
Yeah, okay, cost, really, yeah. What were they?
The price changes?
Yes. I mean, not specifically, but was it in line with what was in the last contract?
It is. The rates that are in our current contract have been held constant for five years. They're provided in the report at an hourly rate and an annual rate, and there is a slight increase in the hourly rate during the school year, and it's a constant rate for the summer camps and substitutes for the current year.
My concern is they were the only vendor to actually submit an RFP, to respond to the RFP.
They were.
And then an operational question. Do we have our own employees who provide the same services? Do they work with them? Would they work with Athletico? Do they... Do we not have those people?
Each school has a head trainer. The head trainers are our employees.
Okay.
And in the letter that's attached here, it does give a little bit more detail in regards to the head trainers and about the vendors and so on.
And they work collaboratively. They don't work for the vendor, correct? The... Our employees are our employees, but they don't take direction from the vendor. They provide... The vendor provides services.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Did we get feedback on why the other seven or six vendors that did not provide a response or reply to the request declined?
We had feedback from a few of them. Some just said that they were not interested in bidding the services. One had been bought out by another company, and they were not interested in this market, and some we did not have a response from, or feedback, I should say.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment. I've got to say, I'm not super happy with the cap being 5%, but at the same time, they're the only people who responded to the bid, so I feel like we're kind of over a barrel. And at the end of the day, it's not entirely unreasonable, but I am going to note my displeasure.
Well, CPI is going to be wild for the next couple of years.
I understand. I'm still... Still, 5% feels a little high for me. I would have liked it to be lower, but it's not like we have other bidders.
But they're basically contract employees, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're not paying any kind of benefits or things of that nature for those individuals, then? Okay, if there's no other discussion, then may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
All right, then that takes us to potential topics for future discussion. Mr. Rosenbloom?
Thank you. At the March 17 Board of Education meeting, we rejected a proposal to have construction and architecture firms provide specifications and bids to do some capital and facility improvement projects in our district, starting this summer and continuing over the next several years at a projected cost of $83.5 million. Included in that proposal were items that directly impact the safety and well-being of students, staff, and visitors to our schools, including updating our public address systems, making our auditoriums ADA compliant, and updating or installing ventilation and cooling systems in our applied tech classrooms. We heard during public comments last month from an applied tech... I believe he was a department chair and teacher regarding the importance of ventilation in our applied technology classrooms. In these classrooms, our students and staff are using equipment and tools that require safety compliance, alert mentality, and attention to details. Without proper educational and working conditions, our students and staff are being put at risk and in potentially dangerous and life-threatening conditions in our classrooms. I know this firsthand from attending an open house at Palatine High School over three years ago, when the classroom was between 95, 90, and 95 degrees with no air movement or cooling available. It was an uncomfortable and concerning situation for me to be there for about 15 minutes. Ever since then, I brought this up to our district leaders, recommending we address this and take care of it as soon as possible. This must be taken care of as soon as possible, and I believe now is the time. The overall project from last month amounted to approximately $83.5 million. I calculated that if you consolidate the PA system updates, auditorium updates, including ADA compliance, and the applied tech classroom ventilation and cooling systems from the rest of the proposed improvements presented at that board meeting, it comes to $18 million. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education authorize the administration to engage its architects and engineers to prepare design and specifications for auditorium improvements at all schools, replacement of public address systems at all schools, and the addition of air conditioning in the remaining applied technology classrooms in four schools, and further that the projects be bid and presented to the Board of Education for consideration in future meetings and as soon as possible per district procedural protocols and practices.
Mr. Rosenbloom, I think we're out of order, because this is for potential topics, not to make a motion in regards to it. If you want to make the...
I believe during items for future discussion in the past, we have had motions presented and voted upon as well.
I...
Believe that's even in the last couple of months, we've done that.
And I would ask that maybe we take a look at this. Let me get some information right now. If we have some information about what's the timeframe of being able to do some of these improvements? Would we be able to start in the fall, start in the summer? Is this something that's viable?
There is possibility that some of the public address system work could take place this summer. I frame that in a contingency that we are able to have the parts available to us, but the labor is certainly able to... Available to be able to complete improvements in one of our schools that would be closed for summer school this year. The remaining work would require some architectural and engineering aspects of it, where components would be able to begin summer 2023.
Madam President? Point of clarification. There was some mention of this being a safety hazard. I don't recall our shop facilities being on any of the life safety surveys that were conducted by our architects and engineers. I just want to make sure that what we're considering a dangerous environment is being affirmed by our professionals that perform those inspections and studies.
Okay. And was that part of the information that we had? Because we looked at this, when was it? Two meetings ago, and I think we were a little bit surprised that the motion did not pass. That... Because it didn't pass, we're not able to move forward with it, obviously, and that's going to delay the work and everything else that has to go into it.
Madam President, I was just asking if it was in the life safety study report, or if the architects and engineers consider it a safety issue.
I understand what you're saying. I'm leading up to that. I'm going to ask the question, was that part of the information that was presented to us when we originally looked at the work that we were going to be doing for the auditoriums, the PA, and for the classrooms?
Lauren, during your presentation?
Yes, all three projects were presented at the March meeting.
Did it come up on the origin... Our most recent life safety survey that we're almost done with?
The public address systems were reviewed as a component that is eligible for the life safety study, and the air conditioning aspect was not something that was reviewed as a component, to the best of my knowledge. It is not identified on the current survey.
Okay.
I also want to clarify something. I mean, I'm looking at the presentation from March, and the total anticipated project budgets delineated by year. Is that where you got your total figure? You added it up every year?
I added up all the years for all the projects, yes.
Okay, so just to clarify for the public who's watching, that number isn't specifically delineated, and I wanted everybody to know where you're getting it from. So we're looking at the March agenda, and we're looking at the presentation that was presented there, and I'm on Slide 20 of 21, which is where you're getting the figures that you totaled up to the... Okay.
I'm intrigued, Mr. Rosenbloom. I appreciate you doing some independent research or analysis. I... At one point, you said $83 million, and then you said you did some look, and you can do it for $18 million.
If you look at the slide that shows the cost of each of the different projects, and do the math right there by looking specifically at those three projects, remove... and do the math right there by looking specifically at those three projects, remove from the remaining projects on that particular slide, it comes to 18.
So we remove, we remove some of the projects that were, that were already there, and then we just, your proposal is to do the, the three projects for 18 million, for $18 million?
My proposal is, my, my recommendation is that because of the, the safety and wellness of the students and staff involved in our schools, that the PAs, that having an inoperable or not fully functional PA system, that there's a lack of ventilation in classrooms that are using heavy and, and safe, and safe equipment operationally by our students and staff, and that we are out of ADA compliance in our auditoriums, that looking at those three things, I'm asking to have those carved out from all the other projects for the time being, because I, I feel there's a sense of urgency that if this board did not pass it at the previous meeting where it was voted upon, that we now need to revisit those specific items that are, are of concern to me from a safety and well-being perspective of those who are participating, partaking in those facilities of ours.
I, I think it's worth a discussion. Is there enough time between now and the next board meeting for the administration to recrunch the numbers and provide a viable timeline for what Mr. Rosenbloom is proposing?
And the financials?
Yes. The, the cost estimates were provided at the last meeting and do align. I can certainly revisit those again and see if anything has changed, but that is accurate, that it was estimated at $18 million for those three projects across the district. But I can certainly put together additional information on the timeline.
Yeah, I mean, part of the, one of the constraints is, is how quick can it can be done. I think that's Mr. Rosenbloom's concern. And if it can't be done until September, we, we need to know that. I mean, so I, I think...
Ms. Hummel, if you can say again, she's already given that information in general, and I'd like her to repeat it again.
Yeah, the, for the summer of 2022 upcoming, the one potential project that would be able to be completed are the updates to the public address system at Conant High School. All other work would not be able to be completed until starting summer 2023, and then we would need to lay out a schedule across the upcoming summers. Obviously, we would not be doing it all in one summer.
So you get ADA? I'm sorry, you get, you get the, the speakers, the...
Because we didn't approve it at that particular meeting.
That was the timeline that was originally suggested regardless on slide 18 here, estimated timeline for the HVAC, for example. It's under discussion. It says right here is 2023 to 25.
So, so I guess a follow-up question to that is, if we were to postpone this decision for discussing at next month's meeting, or even the following month's meeting, will that further delay the remaining items, be it the ADA compliant auditorium work and/or the ventilation of our applied tech rooms?
So my, at this point, our architects have told us that if they have direction by approximately early June, that they would be able to still have time to design for summer 2023. It would not allow us to do anything additional summer 2022. And I did want to just clarify that when we're talking about the applied technology classrooms, that it is air conditioning, the ventilation is, is appropriate. It is the addition of air conditioning in the spaces.
All right. Would we be able to have you bring it back to us, bring the, the three separate items, and we can vote on that separately in case there's any concern that someone may have? We'll have the information in front of us. We'll have probably a repeat of, of what you had given us before, but then we can make a decision in regards to moving forward.
And some time to mull over it.
Well, I feel like that's a more transparent process regardless.
That's what we're saying, yes.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but doing so will delay the PA system update from this summer?
If we hypothetically approve this in May, just hypothetically...
If we approve it in May, what will that impact, if anything?
It, it could potentially impact it. I, what I don't know right now is the lead time to order the parts needed to make the improvements is very volatile. And, you know, at, at this point, they're telling me they can do it if we push it back two weeks. I'm not, I don't know what that would do at that time. It is still possible, but it is also possible that it would delay it. So I, I cannot give you an affirmative answer on that.
And as we're, as we're discussing moving forward this, I still have concern with our revenue flow due to delays with the Cook County assessors and our need for reserves in the next coming months. From my perspective, unless it's absolutely mandated in our life safety report, I think it would be more appropriate to bring this forward once the property tax bills and the assessor's office has stabilized and we're back on a regular collection cycle.
To me, I had wanted to see this proposal again, once the strategic plan was presented. I thought this proposal was really great, exceeded my expectations. And for me, then my objection was really a timing issue. I wanted to see the, the feedback from the community through the strategic plan process would have supported such work. I believe that it should, but I, I'd like to wait for the evidence. So for me, it was a timing issue. That being said, I'm perfectly happy to discuss the, what feels like a carve-out proposal in May. I'm not willing, I would rather wait and see it back in a couple of weeks, since we have two meetings in May anyway. I'd rather, even knowing the risk with the supply chains being what they are, that it might push forward a delay. I feel like it's just a, a better process anyway for all of us and for the community who are watching. So if you could, to bring back a revised proposal essential, essentially for discussion, and then either voting up or down.
Well, let's see what we have, and I would like to probably see it come forward to us. I know when we talked about the strategic plan, one of the things that really stood out was communication was the big thing. The focus groups, the steering committee, they were pleased with the, the communication. One of the things was making certain that we had translation. We've addressed that at our last. Facilities were never a concern with them. They were very supportive of the facilities and something that we need to keep going on with, because, you know, when we stopped doing that, that's when things start to deteriorate. So I would, I would like to see, you know, come back with some numbers, give us some information, and then we can take that to, to the vote.
Just a quick, I'm in full agreement. That's how I feel.
Then I have one more comment. On my last tour, there were some life safety issues that we looked at, like some temporary walls. What happens with that project? Now, is that being pushed back?
It is not. We have two phases of the demountable wall replacement. One, the first phase is scheduled to take place this summer. The second phase will take...
Perfect, thank you.
...place next summer.
And in support of, of my comments and, and this board's request to, to hold on moving forward with this until more information is gathered, I would again like to ask the community to provide us input and their thoughts on these specific, these specific recommendations or items. If you have a student who has participated in them, or if you're a staff member who has partaken in anything related to these items, or you have any concerns, please bring those to our attention.
Okay. Thank you. Are we clear on the direction, then, Dr. Small? Okay, thank you. All right, that'll take us to our committee reports. I do not have an NSSO report. That will lead us to EdRed and Mr. Rosenbloom.
First, there was an EdRed meeting that I was unable to attend, but I know that Mrs. Hummel attended, so perhaps she has an update for us on that EdRed meeting.
I do. The last meeting was on April 14th. There were two speakers that attended the meeting. First was Representative Walker, who talked about House Bill 448, which is a recapture levy bill with a three-year look-back provision. And then there was a legal firm that presented on some of the new leave provisions, including COVID leave and the paycheck protection. There were a series of bills that had passed both houses and are presented to the governor for signature. I will not go through them all tonight because there were so many of them, but there were several main categories. There was a finance and contracting provision, which...
I'm sorry, I can't, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. There was a finance and contracting section, which included a number of bills. Talked about some additional funding that has been made available to education. Again, the Walker bill, which talked about the three-year recapture levy and an abatement scenario provision. There were a number of bills that talked about staffing shortages, particularly right now, which some of the pertinent ones to our district included changes in substitute teaching and retiree hours, just to assist with some of the shortages that are challenging school districts right now. There were some special education bills. One was recently signed, which requires non-approved residential placements be reimbursed, or I should say, non-ISBE-approved residential placements to be eligible for reimbursement. There were some programming changes. And there were some other COVID-related bills, which talked about, again, just some various provisions with regard to licensing, and then some HR and personnel bills, a few of which have been signed recently. One pertains to face law. The other is a reinstatement of hearing procedures that were paused temporarily due to a, an emergency order related to COVID. So a lot going on, a lot yet to be signed, and we'll continue to wait and see what progresses with those bills.
Thank you. And then earlier this week, Mrs. Hummel, Dr. Small, and I had the, the privilege of attending EdRed's 50th, 50th anniversary legislative dinner. And at that dinner, it was really honoring the, the, part of it was honoring the past 50 years that EdRed has been in existence. And, and part of that was a video with several former and current executive board members, superintendents, school administrators at the state and local levels, politicians, and some really nice congratulatory comments for EdRed. The, the dinner included a guest speaker, a keynote speaker, and a panel discussion on social emotional learning. And the guest speaker, who spoke primarily around pandemic recovery and overcoming, was Dr. Carmen Ayala, the Illinois State Superintendent. So it was really, really special to, to hear from her personally right there. She talked about some things that are being done at the state level, including student tutorial, especially overcoming the pandemic and, and gaps and things like that. Student tutorial programs, educator coaching and mentoring. She mentioned affinity groups, and I know from an equity perspective, we've talked about affinity groups for our teachers. They're, they're putting together affinity groups for teachers at the state level. She mentioned that the state-level vacancy rate is 1.5%. 1.5% at the state level. Now, obviously, that's different depending on where you are in the state, but at a state level, she had mentioned that. There was a panel that discussed different things around social emotional learning, and they included, so, so EdRed, for people that don't know, EdRed is a consortium of school districts in the north and northwest suburbs. And the purpose of EdRed is to lobby for legislative awareness and change at the state level on behalf of school districts in the north and northwest suburbs of Chicago. So the panelists included Senator Adrian Johnson from District 30, Representative Michelle Musman from District 56, Michael Di Bartolo, a superintendent of finance at Wheeling, District 21, Lori Heinz, superintendent of Palatine District 15, Jody McGurley, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services at River Trails 26, and Carla Owen, board member at Maine 207. So it was interesting to hear from different perspectives, some of the questions that were asked, and hear multiple people respond to the same question or the same, the same dialogue. So that was very interesting. And, and as always, it was a great opportunity to network with other school districts, share different things that are going on, and it was a really good activity and event to participate in. Dr. Small or Mrs. Hummel, do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Community and Family Services report, either Mr. Dombrowski or Mr. McGowan?
It was canceled, right?
No, we had a meeting this week for the POC, which covers the, the south portion of our, our district. Representative Musman was in attendance, along with all the associated organizations. A lot of event information was passed among the different organizations. Some keynotes that I took were, they're looking at increasing bicycle path access to Harper. They're working with IDOT on that. There's mortgage assistance available. They talked about supporting Ukrainian refugees in the state and sharing information about that. And then District 54, Beth Farr is retiring, and she will be replaced by Aubrey Hayes. So she had been with District 54 for quite some time, and I think that's, you know, like the key pieces of that.
Thank you. All right, next is the Illinois Association of School Boards report. Mr. Rosenbloom?
I have so much going on. This has been a very busy month. First of all, I brought up at the last meeting, I mentioned that the state of Illinois is joining a new consortium of school board associations, as having pulled out of the National Association of School Boards. And the new name, the name of the consortium that we're joining as a state is the Consortium of State School Boards Association. There's an acronym for that. But the state of Illinois is one of the founding members, and in fact, the director of the North Cook Division is a member of the task force that is reviewing how the new organization will operate, what their mission, vision, and values are. And so I'm really excited that, that she will be there representing our area, our division of, of the State Board of Education, and, and be part of that. So I have more. Just when you thought, okay. So also, on the 20th, there were a few of us from, from the district that attended the North Cook Division meeting of IASB. Myself and Mrs. Klimkowitz and Dr. Small attended that, and it was held at Lincoln Junior High in the Skokie School District. This, this school is on the site of a former school that was closed, and it was determined by the district that it was too expensive to remodel. So they tore it down, built a whole brand-new school, and this is their first year open. And it has things like a STEM lab, like a black box room used for different theatrical-type productions and simulation. There's tons of labs there. There's, there's small group meeting spaces and conference rooms. And I got to tell you, it is absolutely gorgeous, gorgeous, using all the new fangled things that a school can possibly have for junior high students. It really is incredible. And the students that go there absolutely love it. They've even taken, they had some murals that, I'm trying to remember...
Were in the gym.
They were in the gym, and now they graced the front entrance halls. So they brought part of the old school into the new school. It is real, I could tell there was a lot of thought that went into that. And the, the meeting was, was very interesting. They had an engaging presentation by Ralph Martier, who's the Executive Director of the Center for Tax and Budget Accountability. And, and he has some other things that he does, too. He's a professor of public policy at Roosevelt University and some other things. And he spoke about the state budget when it comes to education and pension and property taxes. And at first, I thought, oh my gosh, I'm going to be like poking my eyes out with a sharp pencil, right? Listening to, to this kind of thing for, for a long period of time. I'm fine with it here in our board meeting and getting ready to do things for our district, but at that level, I thought it was going to be pretty dry. He was pretty entertaining, I got to tell you. So he kept my attention the whole time and, and explained things at a layman's term, right? And it was really very informative, and, and I learned a lot. And he explained things that if we did this, then this is going to happen, and here's how it can look, you know, in years to come and, and things like that. So it was very, very informative. And also to hear from our division, the executives of our division talking about what we're doing... we're doing as a division and what's going on at the state level, it was a very informative program. And finally, earlier today, I attended a webinar called "When Online Critics Attack." And there was a gentleman who spoke, who used to be part of ISB, and now he lives in Kentucky, so he was on Zoom from Kentucky, talking about use of social media among school boards, community administrators, talked about do's and don'ts and things like that. So, that was very informative, and he had 80 people attending that webinar today. Tomorrow is ISB Advocacy Friday for members of ISB to learn about what's going on at a legislative level. This month, the staff will be discussing the delegate assembly and the resolutions process, very timely. And in May, ISB is hosting a couple of webinars about school finance. One is on revenue, and one is on expenditures. So, if people would like to learn even more about that from an ISB perspective for our board members, I encourage you to listen in and learn from that. That's it for my ISB report.
Thank you. And maybe next time we meet, at our next meeting, we can talk a little bit more about the resolutions and some of the changes that are going to take place with that. The next subject here is Parent Connections and Communications Report. Ms. Cavell or Mr. Dombrowski? Was there any activity?
Yes, there was a meeting. Ms. Holmes, Dr. Small, myself, two other parents, one for a brief time until they lost their Zoom connection. So, the four of us reviewed videos and discussed ways to increase engagement using various forms of media. And I think there's still some development, but plenty of feedback provided, so we'll see where it goes.
I'm unable to attend those meetings as a rule. My work, my job does not give me the flexibility to attend those during the workday.
Thank you. All right. The next is Student Wellness Report. Mr. McGowan?
I was out with COVID. I apologize.
The last Student Wellness Meeting was last Thursday, the 21st, I believe. It was changed last minute from in-person here at the building to online. I think right now, what we're seeing is that we've met the students where they are as far as providing them with the information they need, as far as counselors, therapists, et cetera, et cetera. Now, it's more the mission is to, how do we spread this more aggressively through the district so all students know what's going on, as opposed to just the students who need to utilize the services? So, the last meeting was kind of focused on more ways to get more community engagement, more ways to get the students more motivated to talk about these things and to spread it with their peers. Because again, we don't want them to get to a situation where they need it and they don't, they have no access to the information. So, I think that was the just, the last overall theme of the meeting, listen to the students, trying to figure out which ways, which ways better to communicate with them. Schoology apparently isn't the way to go, according to the students. They don't, they don't want that. So, that kind of insight is helping build a pretty solid foundation to the students and having access to student wellness and the resources the district provide at every school, too.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have our announcements, we have honors convocations coming up, and we have graduations coming up. So, that's absolutely amazing. So, we've got our list of people here.
Before we go further, there's a couple of additional things I'd like to mention are coming up. One is that Harper College is hosting a program called Suburbanization of Poverty: Opening Minds and Changing Lives, coming up on May 4th in the evening. It's an evening of information, collaboration, and shared experiences. And there's going to be, there's a keynote speaker, but there's also a simulation of some kind regarding poverty in suburbanization. So, people might want to check that out.
That's it. That's actually an invitation-only event, so it is not an open event.
Oh, is it? All right. I apologize then. And then, also, the Conant Debate Team is having a debate against cancer fundraiser coming up on Saturday, May 14th, from, and it's only an hour long, 10:30 to 11:30 in the morning at Conant High School in the auditorium to celebrate the life of Brian Beam, a former debate team captain and outstanding student who put up a fight against cancer. So, if people have, and with the fact that we had, you know, some award-winning debaters here today, it might be an opportunity for the community to come out and do some supporting and see the debate.
That is an open event, so I would encourage you to go to that.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. I appreciate that.
All right. Okay, with that, the next couple of items are retirement requests. The recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement request of Erin Lombard, effective June 2024, according to the Master Contract of the D-211 United Support Staff; Roxanne Miller, effective May 2025, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union; and Catherine Poeter, effective May 2023, according to the Master Contract of the D-211 United Support Staff. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Ms. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Next recommended action is that effective July 1st, 2022, Lashandra, Lashonda Sandifer be appointed as Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion in D-211 as a, at a gross salary of $145,000. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Present.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
And the last item, the recommended action, is that the Board of Education approve the terms of the tentative agreement reached with the Teachers Union, effective July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2024. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have some comments. First, I'd like to thank everyone involved in negotiating the contract that's being presented today. Secondly, thank you to our teachers for the work that is done inside and outside of the classroom every day for the young adults in our communities. A contract is an agreement between the community and the employees of that bargaining unit. Those within the community have been clear that we should be prioritizing education. They have also been clear that there needs to be a balance between the taxes paid and the competitive living wages and benefits District 211 provides. A pension is a form of deferred compensation. District 21 salaries and benefits have become more competitive with the agreed salary schedule. I expect our recruitment and retention rates will remain very high. Unfortunately, the doubling of the end-of-career allotments and retro application into the TRS is beyond what my neighbors have explained to me as fair compensation. Every dollar that this contract commits to the state to pay into TRS is a dollar that does not arrive to the classroom. This action not only shortchanges our teachers and students of state funding, it stresses our most vulnerable families forced to meet the ever-increasing property tax bill that is currently providing over 85% of our budget revenue. This board should support the competitive salaries or the maximized deferred benefits, but it shouldn't support both for a short-term contract that would be deaf to the request to balance our community needs.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion?
I have a statement here or discussion. Pension spiking is a practice of boosting an employee's salary during the final years of work before retirement. The teacher's retirement system, or TRS Pension Formula, calculates retiree benefit levels by averaging an employee's highest four consecutive years of salary within the final 10 years of service. While local school districts decide employee salaries, state income taxpayers are ultimately on the hook for funding TRS pensions. A little history. State lawmakers capped end-of-career salary spikes to 6% a year, per year in 2005 because of the costly impact pension spiking was having on education funding and beyond. School districts were still free to hike salaries by whatever amount they chose, but increases over 6% annually meant local property taxpayers would have to make extra contributions into TRS rather than the state. School districts began treating that limit as a given and began automatically hiking salaries by 6% each year for the four years prior to retirement. These raises massively boost a teacher's retirement benefit. Hiking salary by almost 26.2% means a career teacher with an average salary of $73,000 will earn approximately $380,000 more during their retirement. In D-211, where salaries and benefits are much more generous because it is, because it has a very affluent tax base of local industry and commerce, for teachers retiring, for teachers nearing retirement, paychecks exceed $100,000 annually, and because of the required 3% compounding COLA increases on top of pension spiking, retired teachers soon began making more than what they were earning when teaching. These examples were routine statewide and why lawmakers in 2019 cut the cap in half to 3% to stop the hemorrhaging of the state education budget. Shortly after the current expiring four-year contract, 2018 to 2022, which included that 3% pension spiking cap, Governor Pritzker with a supermajority legislature raised the cap back to 6%. The effect of school districts automatically spiking pension in any amount is this. Because wealthier school districts are more likely to have the resources to boost salaries, pension spiking forces state income taxpayers and poorer school districts to subsidize those wealthier districts' pension costs. Pension spiking funnels scarce education funds to a fortunate few retirees who are employed by affluent school districts such as 211 at the expense of teachers currently serving and future teachers still in training. While local property taxes aren't, local property taxpayers aren't directly on the hook for TRS benefits, they do pay the painful price, but in an overlooked way. As pensions consume state education funds, school districts in less affluent areas must resort to hiking already-high property taxes to find needed revenue, usually through referendum, which is also tacked onto the property tax bills. Many school districts would be surprised to learn that the state has increased, rather than decreased, education funding over the years, largely because more and more money must be funneled to TRS, which is only about 40% funded and holds the most debt of all five state-run pensions at $75 billion and growing. This is necessary to keep up with the ever-increasing retired teacher pension costs. What this means is only about 1/3 of state funding reaches school districts. Between 1996 and 2016, for example, the state increased its education funding by more than $5.4 billion, or 87%. But $3.6 billion, or 66% of that increase, went to former teachers' pension payments instead of current teachers' classrooms. Fast forward to 2022, that 60 cent, 66% has grown to spending about 70% of education funds to pay pensions. The proposed teacher's contract includes a 6% pension spike compared to the 3% in the expiring contract. Additionally, under the proposed contract, the 6% pension spike is retroactive for up to two years for teachers and administrators who submitted retired paperwork under the current 2018 to 2022 expiring contract. This retroactive provision was recently added to the proposed contract 15 days ago per written tentative agreement over the signatures of a member of the negotiating team and the president, union president, without prior consultation of the entire Board of Education and not known by the full board until beginning of this week. It is for these reasons I cannot vote yes to approve this proposed contract.
Any other comments?
Yes, a couple of points. I think a lot of people watching, those in the audience would be surprised to hear me say that I agree with a good portion of what Mr. Kramer, and to some extent, what Mr. Dombrowski have said about the overall pension system, the way it affects our state finances, the way it adversely affects education funding as a whole, et cetera. Those kinds of eloquent speeches about such a system, in my view, would be more placed for someone who's running for state office with a solution to fix said problem, because the history that you so kindly delineate shows that really, the most effective way to tamp down on those pension spikes is to do it at a state level so that unions aren't able to pit school districts against one another. That cap going up gives unions, not districts, much more bargaining power. And so, I would hesitate to, I think, even though in principle, a lot of what you're saying is right, the context can be very misleading. You know, it's certainly not my impression of this whole process through the board, and I would extend good faith to most boards of education in similar positions around the state, that people don't go into these positions looking to spike pensions as much as possible when negotiating with teachers' unions. But the effect of that cap going from 3% to 6% really gives the various teachers' unions a lot more bargaining power when going to the table with districts, because you have one district, in some previous contracts, for example, as we well know, having sat on this board throughout this process with our teachers' union, when that cap changed, some of those contracts included specific language anticipating when state politics would change, that the cap would automatically revert. So, as soon as that, that cap at a statewide level went from 3% to 6%, a significant number of contracts automatically reverted to. And that puts more pressure on districts like us, where that wasn't, that wasn't the case. And so, really, the function of this cap, you know, gives a lot of unions bargaining power because they pit school districts against one another in their contract negotiations. So, philosophically, again, I agree with you. I just think the solution to that isn't found at this board table. I think the solution to that is found at the state office, lowering that cap or changing the system to reduce that bargaining power of unions when they approach school districts at the bargaining table. I think that's the most effective way, and your own history, as we know, most recently, I think proves that to be the case. So, that being said, this tentative agreement, of course, includes a lot more than just the pension spikes and the provisions that you've said before. There's quite a lot of numbers here, you know, considering where the unions started out on what their requests are. The salary, I think, was a big win for the board. I want to be careful not to reveal too much info. I don't know what's, what we're available to publicly talk about. But I think that our savings on health insurance is really great as well. I do like that we're increasing the hourly rate for our teachers' assistance. As a PA myself, I know how integral those are to the success of the school district. It's important that we be competitive for that rate, and for those people, they're highly valuable. I also emphatically disagree with your assertion that we were somehow blindsided. I know you feel that way. I'm not going to tell you how to feel, but I'm certainly going to vehemently disagree that this board was somehow hoodwinked into a provision that, which is clearly what you're trying to tell the public. I don't think that's the case at all. I think we've been very open, and when we extend authority to our bargaining team and the provisions that they brought back and are before us are covered under everything that we've said. And if you have, you know, you have every right to your opinion, but if you think that that was a failure in your process, I've said before in closed session, I'm happy to state in an open session, that's really on you.
Madam President, can I interrupt? Our board policy and our rules of order should really have board members addressing the board president and not personally engaging each other in the fashion that is currently proceeding.
You are correct.
Okay, Miss, okay, Madam President, I'll address all my comments to you. So, I just vehemently disagree.
All right. Thank you.
I have some comments as well.
Excuse me, the, my name was mentioned. I would like, I would like to.
No one's name was mentioned. We just talked about a value of respect and Mr.
All right. Members, please, let's try to be civil. That's one of the things that we value, and if we want to set an example, let's do it here.
Can I address?
Mr. Rosenblum?
Please, not towards Ms. Cavell, but please state whatever the concern is or what point you want to make.
Okay. First of all, there is, there is a public misconception, and maybe some misconception on this board, that these, that these pension spiking caps are law. It's a cap, it's not a law. It's up to school boards as to whether or not we're going to raise It's up to school boards as to whether or not we're going to raise, to spike pensions by 6%. There was some discussion about this is something that that has to be handled at the state legislature by someone who's running, and would be more appropriate for someone running for state rep. I'm not running for state rep.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not finished, okay?
Then get to the point, and then, Ms. Cavill, if you have another point, we're going to get to that, and we need to.
Ms. Cavill had, had, there was plenty of time, I'm going to take my, my appropriate amount of time.
Let's stick with the point, please. What point do you wish to make in regards to this contract?
It's up to the board to decide whether or not we're going to spike pensions. It's not at the state level, it's here. And the road, one of the first steps in addressing this massive issue that we have is for school boards, this one included, to just say no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rosenbloom, you had a comment?
Thank you, I have a couple. One is that this school board, making a, a statement or a stand, and it's, number one, expect other school boards to follow, and number two, expect things to happen at a state level because that is truly where the pension problem lies, is, I think, not good thinking, in my opinion. Regarding this contract, which is what we're supposed to be talking about here, first of all, teachers are the ones who are dedicated and committed to helping, molding, inspiring, teaching, caring for, and embracing our children, our future. I come from a family of teachers. My grandmother was a kindergarten teacher, my mother was a teacher, two out of three of my sisters are teachers, I have aunts, cousins, nieces who are teachers, my wife teaches special ed in District 54, and my daughter is a senior majoring in elementary special ed. So the, the legacy continues within my family of, of supporting and providing education to our students and children across the, the country. As a school board member and member of this community, I respect every constituent across the district, and, and that is why I believe this tentative agreement is one that supports our teachers, our staff, the betterment of our schools, the continued successful operation of our district, and the betterment of our community.
Okay, thank you. As you can tell, that this is not, this contract is not ideal. It's important that we were able to, to come to an agreement. We came into it with open-mindedness and fairness and respectful of, of one another. My main concern is that we keep our students in school. I was, I was taken back when, when the union at one point came up with the newspaper about a potential strike, and that did not sit well with me, because I think what's really important is that our kids remain in school. If everyone is talking about their mental health and everyone else's mental health, we have to keep our kids in school. Again, this contract is not ideal. Ratifying it or signing off on the agreement, I think will keep our kids in school. We've come up with our mission statement, we are reevaluating, we've repositioned our values going forward. I think everybody, every staff member is going to need to know about our values and really work at those, develop our better culture, and really work to support our kids and be transparent, transparent and be honest. Again, this contract is really not ideal, but going forward, it's workable, and we need to, we need to go with it. And is there any other discussion? If not, then we're going to go for a vote. A roll call, please.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right.
Did the motion carry?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, before we end.
Ms. Klimkowitz, I'm sorry, you, I was going to say more comments, and then you called for the vote.
I apologize.
No, it's okay. So, is, Madam President, I just want to say, I think this is a good agreement. And so I appreciate that, you know, this board obviously has wide different, differences of opinion. When you look at the numbers, it's a good agreement. We have very modest salary increases.
All right, Ms. Cavill, I think we're going to, we're going to end.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, I've got a reminder for the board members before we end this meeting. At our last board meeting, we reaffirmed the board's protocols, and this evening, we discussed the values that we support for our students, staff, and ourselves. I think we agree on that. I'd like to remind everyone once again about the social media and the effects your words can have. Please, before posting anything, ask yourself, why am I posting this? What do I want to accomplish? And is this information 100% correct? Does your answer live up to the values that we discussed? If not, please do not post. We need to set an example. If we believe in these values that we talked about, we need to live them. So I'm asking respectfully, please, let's watch our social media. All right, if there's no other business to come before the board, then the board president declares this meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Thank you.